Follow the twenty two order at six thirty two P M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Mason?
Here.
Trustee Blueheart is absent. Trustee McNeil?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Peterson?
Present.
Eric Gertner?
Present. Um, all right, mayoral reports. We have a couple of recognitions. Obviously, yesterday was Veterans Day. So again, thank those that served and a very nice ceremony at Lakes High School. Um, we have Thanksgiving holiday coming up, Native American Heritage Month, Library and Information Services Month, and School Board Members Day. Um, we also do not have a regular board meeting, um, the week of Thanksgiving, but we will have a special planning meeting on the twenty first. Okay. Um, all right, we have a couple of appointments. We have two new, um, members to the Park and Rec Board. Um, one is to appoint Sue Nolan with a term ending twenty twenty seven and also appoint Rob Shartz with a term ending twenty twenty eight. Do I have a motion and a second to confirm those appointments?
Well, both of them are separately.
Together's fine.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sue Nolan to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, term ending twenty twenty seven, and Rob Shortz to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board with term ending twenty twenty eight.
Motion, Trustee Pierce?
Second.
Second, Trustee Peterson. Um, any discussion? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Mason? McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
By voting yes, motion carries. Uh, ma'am, clerk, would you like to swear them in?
Nolan, having been appointed as member of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board of the Village of Antioch and the County of Lake, do you solemnly swear from the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? Now, please, let me discharge the duty of Park Commissioner to the best of my ability.
You.
I, Rob Shortz, being appointed as member of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board of the Village of Antioch and the County of Lake, do I only swear affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And now, please, let me discharge the duty of Park Commissioner to the best of my ability.
Thank you and thank you both for agreeing to sit on that board. Um, we do have one other matter. I'd like to introduce Mark Janik. He is, um, where's he? He's sitting right here. He's going to present tonight. He is currently working for the village as a village planner and zoning administrator. So, um, get to know Mark. He is, um, contracted right now, but we have further discussions with him about, uh, other potential arrangements. So, um, thank you, Mark. Any citizens sign up to address the board? That's always a good sign. That means we're doing well. Um, consent agenda, approval of the October twenty second, twenty twenty five public hearing and regular meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Motion, Trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second, Trustee Martinez. Um, roll call, please.
Mason?
McNeil? Same.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Peterson?
Yes.
Or voting yes, one abstention, motion carries. Um, all right. So if you were sworn in or, um, don't want to stick around for the rest, this is a lot of financial, uh, presentations that I'll give you a free pass right now, all right?
Thank you, Dust.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, we have, the first item is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of two million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. Do I have a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Motion, Trustee Peterson. Second, Trustee Pierce. Um, any questions? Oh, oh, sorry. I just heard you from the side. Second, uh, Trustee Martinez. Any questions or discussion? It's a little larger amount than, you know, normal. Trustee Pierce?
I was just curious if we could explain the capital projects of five hundred seventy-four thousand and the water and sewer fund, which I assume was a transfer or a payment on something for nine hundred twenty-one thousand.
Just very briefly, I was running through the list of over ten thousand, just very quickly, probably easier. Um, we had a thirty-two thousand, six eighty-five for BSNA. That's our financial software that we've implemented. Then there's a, there's two charges to Frederick Quinn, our construction managers. There's one for just shy of fifty-eight thousand. It's a payment for the Village Hall project is at ramps down. Then there's one for four hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one, and that's for the public works building construction project. We had a twenty, just shy of twenty-five thousand dollar payment to I M, our Illinois Public Risk Fund for, uh, work comp. Then we had a twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four to IMRF, uh, fifteen thousand for some paving work, sixty thousand to Raymond Chevy as part of the development agreement with them, and then a total of nine, nine hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents to Bank of New York, and that was for debt service on the, uh, treatment plant project. Um, then we had one for ten thousand flat for the Selly Law.
Yep. Any other questions, discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mason? McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Peterson?
Yes.
By voting yes, motion carries. Um, item number three is consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, resolution twenty-five dash eighty-six. Uh, we have Matt Olson from, uh, Lauterbach and Amen, uh, here in person. Oh, there he is. Okay. Um, so do I have a, um, motion and a second?
Still moved.
Second. Motion, Trustee McNeil. Second, Trustee Pierce. Um, Mr. Olson, the floor is yours.
All right, so we didn't want to stay for the financial report.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's, oh, don't worry. It's the police pension one.
Oh, okay. Um, so first, I also introduce myself. I'm Matt Olson. Um, I'm one of the audit leads at Lauterbach and Amen. I was the lead on this audit. Um, so I'm here to kind of walk you through the major points, the financial statements, um, that we issue. Uh, first, thank you to the board for letting me present today. Um, and a special thanks to Michael and his staff. Uh, they did a great job. Uh, we know, uh, audits take a lot of time and effort out of the normal everyday work. Um, and we appreciate everything that they did for us to make our lives as easy as possible. Um, they did a great job with streamlining communication even after, um, we were on site. And I know that's gonna continue into the next few years, just with, uh, the process going into BSNA. Um, because I know trying to do an audit, BSNA, and your normal day work, um, isn't always the easiest. But, um, I know especially once the transition happens, it'll be easier for them to run reports and it'll be a lot easier for us because we'll be able to get in there, um, pull everything ourselves and we won't require them to, um, do as much, so they'll have a lot more time to do the, uh, more important stuff. Um, but so the first thing I want to bring to your attention will be the actual auto report, uh, which will be the big bound here. Um, so page seven of the auto report is the first item, um, that I kind of want to touch on. That is the COA, um, certificate. So that's a certificate that not every village gets. It's just ones that, um, have like this great, uh, an excellent financial reporting and the village of Antioch has gotten this for many years and, um, they're getting it for, for last year as well and this year. Um, the next page will be page ten, uh, which is the auditor's report. So it kind of lays out that management's responsible for the preparation and presentation of financial statements and our opinion is to generate a opinion on those financial statements and everything in there. Um, and I'm happy to say that, uh, we had an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest and highest level of assurance that we can issue, uh, related to financial reports.
One second. I still look trustees. It's actually page seventy-six of the packet, so if you want to catch up. Okay, we're good.
Um, so that basically just means the financial statements are free from, uh, any material misstatement and, uh, the village has very sound internal controls over the financial reporting. Um, so to not bore you with a ton of the numbers, uh, the first thing I want to kind of show you will be the management discussion and analysis. Um, it's a great narrative summary over the financial highlights. Um, we know that just looking at all the numbers on the different pages is pretty hard to digest. Uh, the management discussion analysis or the M D N A, uh, lays out everything pretty well with graphs and charts and, um, kind of highlights the major points. Um, so I would, I would definitely say that's a great area to look through, um, at your leisure and kind of break down on your own. Um, page fourteen is the one area I do want to bring up in the M D N A. Um, so you'll see under the financial highlights, the, uh, net position for the governmental activities went up by around six point two million, uh, which is awesome, and the business type activities increased by about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, overall in the net position. Next, I'll kind of bring you to some of the fund level stuff, uh, which will be page thirty-four. Um, so here you're going to see, uh, a line about halfway down. Uh, it's called excess deficiencies of revenues or over and under expenditures. Uh, this is basically your, uh, revenues netted against your expenditures to kind of see how each fund is reporting, um, and how they're doing as we go through it. So, uh, you'll see the general fund had an increase of, uh, fourteen point eight million, um, to, uh, or not fourteen point eight million, that was the expenditure, sorry. Uh, had an increase of two point seven million, uh, to end with a ending fund balance of twelve point two. Um, you will see the, uh, corporative fund had a nine point three thousand dollar, uh, decrease to result in ending fund balance of twenty thousand. Uh, the ARPA fund had an increase of, uh, one point nine million, um, but then transferred out the remaining of the, uh, funds. Um, so the fund is now at zero and will now be closed, um, just because all of the ARPA funds have been spent at this point. Uh, the twenty, the Capital Projects Fund, um, had a decrease of seven point one million, um, but with transfers and everything, ended up with a fund balance of a little over five hundred thousand dollars. And then the twenty twenty-two bonds, uh, bond project fund, um, had an increase of about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, um, to result in an ending fund balance of nine point eight million. Um, so you'll also have the rest of the non-major funds. I'm not going to bore you with all of the funds, um, but you'll be able to see all those broken out, uh, separately in the back of the report at page, uh, one oh seven. Um, so those are the big items with, uh, the actual auto report that I wanted to highlight. Um, the other kind of area I would say to bring your attention to would be, uh, page eighty-six. So page eighty-six lays out, uh, all the IMRF, uh, pension, uh, like, uh, cost, uh, what's going into it, and you'll see, uh, in the bottom right on page eighty-six, uh, there's percentages on the bottom here. Third from the bottom is all the percentages of the amount funded. Uh, so we see the IMRF fund or IMRF is funded eighty or ninety-eight percent, which is awesome. Um, that's right where you want to be and, um, they're doing a great job with that. So that's the big thing with this report, uh, that I wanted to touch on. The next thing would be the management letter. So this is where we give any recommendations for things that we can, uh, think are, hey, this is a good thing to think about. This is a good thing that's coming forward, that's going to happen soon, um, or just kind of big overall, uh, ideas with certain things. Um, so that will be one of the packets. That the first one is IT, uh, security and awareness. Um, that's basically just for, uh, just kind of a, hey, this is something that's important to think about because in the world we live in, um, IT is more important than ever with a lot of the stuff that's happening with, um, kind of a growing area of concern, um, with hackers and, and threats, and, um, you'll see in the manager response, um, you guys are already doing a great job and, um, continue to, uh, strengthen and maintain kind of your IT security as, um, new threats arise. The next ones will be, uh, prior recommendations. Um, so one of them is funds over budget. And this isn't funds that are over the appropriations. This is funds that are just over the working budget, uh, for some of the funds. Um, it's not a big deal just because there is a lot of things that you don't know are going to arise during the year that randomly come out of nowhere. Um, the only thing to really avoid this would be to pass a budget ordinance, uh, amending the original budget. But like I said, it's nothing over the appropriations, so it's nothing really to be concerned about. Um, the second one will be deficit fund balance. Uh, this just lays out, hey, last year we had this. Um, but this year everything's corrected with the deficit fund balance, so everything's good in that area. And then the next two will be upcoming standards, uh, for new reporting. Um, so it's going to be GASB one oh one and one oh two. This is more on the reporting side for us. Um, nothing on the financial side that, um, Michael or any of the staff left to work on, so that's going to be more on our end. Um, that is it for the management letter. And then just to quickly touch on, uh, the SAS one fourteen, um, this is something that if we had any disagreements with management or any difficulties working with them, we would have to disclose. Um, and happy to say there's no wording in there about that because we had no, uh, problems with them. Michael and his whole staff were great and, um, it was a pleasure working with all of them.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
All right, you can.
Does anybody have any questions?
No. Mike?
Yep. So I just want to follow up and, um, say that our staff is appreciative of Matt Olson and, uh, and the Lauterbach and Amen team. They were great to work with. I think we did really well together and the presentation was actually one month earlier than last year, so I think it was very good and I appreciate, thank you and your staff.
Thank you. You. All right, any questions from the board about the presentation? All right, if not, roll call, please.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Peterson?
Yes.
By voting yes, motion carries. And thank you for your report. Do you leave? Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Perfect for my ADD level on those type of reports. Perfect. All right. Um, item number four, consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the Village of Antioch Police Pension Fund, municipal compliance report for fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, resolution number twenty-five,
Agenda?
Dash eighty-seven. Do I have, uh, motion and a second?
Still moved.
Motion, Trustee McNeil?
Second.
Second, Trustee Martinez. For some reason, you and Scott sound the same. Who is it? You tonight?
We were slight jinx.
Okay, you guys sound the same tonight. Okay, um, is this, uh, Michael, your floor?
Thank you. So this, this report that is coming to you is actually from the police pension board, that it's the, um, it's under a house bill that was signed back in two thousand and eight that became effective immediately, that the content of the bill was negotiated by Illinois Municipal League, Illinois Public Pension Fund Association, firefighter and police unions, and it contains provisions requiring new levels of compliance and reporting. And so this report is really just meaning that compliance and reporting. Um, the key items in here is that it's really, um, a report that's bringing to your attention the dollar amount that, uh, they're seeking for tax levy and they're seeking two million, five hundred nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars for tax year twenty twenty-five. And to give you an idea, the actual extension from last year, tax year twenty twenty-four, was two million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Thought I'd turn off my phone, but it's the watch. So the increase is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, um, is what it would be the increase for the, uh, tax levy this year to meet the contributions that they're requesting from the board. I'm flipping back to page three, just a couple of key points. Uh, the funded ratio, um, the village's funded ratio went from forty-six point three percent down to forty-three point seven percent. So it did, uh, we did lose ground a little bit in our funded ratio. Uh, the unfunded liability is twenty-three million dollars. So at any time when someone's saying, do we have money to do something? That's always going to be in my head as the finance director say, no, you really don't have money because you have this debt. Um, and we're going to talk more about that, um, at the December tenth meeting. Any questions?
Questions? All right. All right, roll call, please.
Mason? McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Peterson?
Yes.
By voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution for the determination of the amounts of money estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation for the year twenty twenty-five, calculated in twenty twenty-six upon the taxable property in the Village of Antioch pursued to eighteen dash sixty of the truth in taxation law, resolution twenty-five dash eighty-eight. Do I have a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Motion, Trustee McNeil?
Second.
Second, Trustee Peterson. And is that name of that bill oxymoron, huh? All right, Michael, the floor is yours.
So a quick eight-slide, uh, presentation? And I'll do it by just holding it up. So this is just going to be the first step in the property tax levy process, and it's, uh, to determine the maximum amount that the village will levy. If this, if this amount was to be over five percent increase over last year's tax extension, then a public notice and a public hearing would be required, but, uh, spoiler alert, this is going to be under five percent. And this is not actually the end dollars. This is just an estimate and I'm going to walk you through the steps of where, where I believe we're going to end up with this.
Guess you're stuck with your paper slide presentation.
I'd rather have my job than Jim's anyway.
Oh, wait, students, you guys all here for a class? You guys get in trouble or you just got bored tonight? Uh, class, civics class? Government, so.
Help them with the A V over here.
Yeah, I think, and you guys.
No, they were here for the finance report.
I know, the finance, we got, right?
Afraid to say it.
Any questions while we're waiting to figure out the audio visual? Which one? The, the agenda? Um, they're usually sitting right on that table, um, right? Yeah. They, you can do like I do at my dad's dance recitals, count down to the last item. There's only ten dances left.
So these are the steps, uh, for where we're headed. So, um, we did approve the budget back in, uh, May of twenty-five. Then we approved the, um, FY twenty twenty-six appropriation ordinance, um, in June of twenty-five. And you recall that we approved the non-home rule municipal retail occupation tax. And that was, um, there's two things there that, uh, importance is that it was going to diversify revenues and I'll talk more about that as well. Um, that's effective January one of twenty twenty-six. And today we're determining the tax levy amount twenty days prior to the adoption. Um, again, I'll mention that if it was over five percent, then we'd have a public hearing, which we're not. Um, so December the tenth, I expect that we'll be approving the tax levy ordinance. And a little twist to it, and I'll talk more about that, is that you'll be also authorizing, uh, me to voluntarily reduce the levy. Um, what we'll do after that is we're going to monitor the village's financial position through February of twenty twenty-six. And then, um, I would present to the board our financial position, uh, at the March eleventh of twenty twenty-six Committee of the Whole Meeting. And then in March, I would voluntarily reduce the tax levy. So I can guarantee you this is a twist from anything you've previously done. Um, I'll point out that, uh, the Good. There you go. Um, the mayor's initiative, um, when I started was to diversify the revenues with the least impact to the Antioch residents, and our goal should be to reduce the property taxes. And this is where we're getting to that moment. So I want to thank the village board members that supported and adopted the non-home rule municipal retail occupation tax back in July, which makes it possible for us to manage the ongoing property tax problem. Um, so there's additional dollars and now you're going to be making a decision what to do with those additional dollar, dollars. And as you recall down on the bottom screen there, it was a summary of the break, uh, summary of the background, uh, related to the tax. The tax is intended for public infrastructure and property tax relief. So again, because of that tax, now you're coming up to that moment. So we're, this is all about the determination of the amounts of money, uh, estimated to be necessary to be raised by the taxation for the year twenty twenty-five. The money is to be collected in twenty twenty-six upon the taxable property in the Village of Antioch. Uh, public hearing is not required, as I mentioned, because we're below, um, the five percent. We're actually at four point ninety percent is what is in the, uh, proposed estimated, uh, tax for tonight. Um, as a reminder, the Consumer Price Index used for the property tax limitation law is, uh, two point nine percent. I'll talk more about that. This resolution only determines the estimated amount necessary to be raised by taxation. This estimate can be adjusted prior to its adoption. So the steps have been eliminated from historical. Um, and the reason that these were, um, reason that these are being removed is because typically what you're doing and most municipalities are doing is they're looking to say, we want to capture all the property tax dollars we can receive because of the growth in the community that occurred during the calendar year. And because of that, there's this whole research of the value of the new construction, um, which would have been during calendar year twenty twenty-five. Um, there'd be somebody we, my, me, I would be doing the estimate, uh, about the effects of the property tax limitation law, the two point nine percent, because that's going to affect the total, even if you want the five percent and you have the, the two point nine. I think he's at a bar. Um, this two point nine percent, um, it has an effect on what you're ultimately going to be able to receive. Um, and it, and that does include, uh, new construction. And then ultimately, there's this whole estimating of the equalized assessed valuation. And so typically what you would see is the finance director would come up going, in my best estimate, this is where things are going to be based on all of this. And I've seen worksheet and it, and I know it was prepared by Joy. That thing was seven tabs long. I showed it to Becky. I'm like, this was overkill. Like, this is crazy, but she worked very, very hard on it. And I'm saying, I don't have to work at all at this because you're looking to reduce the taxes, not increase the taxes and capture every possible dollar you can receive from property taxes. So it's a completely different game this year than what you've previously have seen. So the new steps, um, like I mentioned, is that you're approving the tax levy ordinance, authorizing me to voluntarily reduce the levy. In Lake County, what they allow is you're going to submit the levy and it can be based on the dollars I'm telling you, the four point ninety percent. And you're going to include in the ordinance that says that I can reduce, voluntarily reduce that levy. So that way it's going to be telling the county that at some moment in time, I'm going to be requesting the dollars be reduced. And they'll be like, who are you? I've never had a problem in Gray's Lake, Lincolnshire. I've always been able to do this and, and reduce the levies. Um, in Lincolnshire, they wanted an exact rate, um, every year. And for eight years in a row, we were, we had the exact rate that they wanted. I didn't have to go through all this estimating and all that. Just wait to the final moment when I receive the actual E A B amounts from the county, then I could do the math and I can hit the number dead on. So I don't go through all that estimating. There's a lot of work that some people go through and I said, it is not as hard as you're making it out to be. It actually could be done fairly easily. And Lake County says, if you're voluntarily reducing the levy, yeah, absolutely, we're going to accept a lower amount. They don't want property taxes to be any higher because they get grief from residents just as much as we receive grief from residents about the property taxes. Um, so we'll be, we'll be monitoring our financial position, meaning you have coming up, um, some meetings that'll occur that'll say, I think we should spend some of this, some of the monies from the non-home rule municipal retail occupation tax, we should spend some of that on capital improvements, and you can make those decisions to do that. Um, the dollars, you have to recall, I estimated those. I estimated them two different ways, but that doesn't mean I'm the smartest guy in the room at, at calculating this. I'm just the best person in the room probably to calculate it and I do my best at it, but you're looking at somewhere around two point five million. Well, that's a big enough number to give me a little pause to say, I feel good about it. You know, trust me on this one, but, you know, we need to verify. So what'll happen is, um, that, that tax goes into effect on January one. The state, the businesses will collect the monies through January, report to the state in February. We may not see that, we won't see any numbers. We may not see that, we won't see any numbers in February. So we, we're hopeful that we'll see it in March, so that we'll be able to say, it looks like the numbers are coming in as we thought. So that's the last minute thing where that we really want to see that. And so if we wanted to be cautious, we could say, we don't have the numbers. Let's just think maybe it's going to be two million and tone it down a little bit for this year until we get a year under our belt of receiving the tax so that you know, hey, this is, this is a good number. And now we can base it and have reduction in the following year or keep the, uh, taxes the same, but you can make decisions after you have a full year of actual numbers. Um, so I, my, my plan is that I would come back to you in, um, at the March eleventh cow meeting and explain to you where we're at at that moment and what, how I feel, where, where we're at and how much we could be able to reduce it. You'll give me kind of your guidance on what we think we should reduce that levy number two. And so what'll happen is, uh, in mid-March, the county will, um, send out a worksheet and it'll say, based on what you gave us for your levy, this is what your numbers will be, this is what your extension is. And they'll already show what the two point nine percent, um, CPI is going to do to the dollars that we're requesting. So we're requesting five, you know, four point ninety percent. There'll be somewhere in there, it'll say, but you're exceeding the two point nine for this area. Some items don't have that, uh, maxing. Um, the max doesn't apply, so like to the pensions, I believe, that two point nine won't apply to it. Um, but they're going to come out with that worksheet that basically tells me you're, you're over requesting, you need to reduce down. And all the finance directors do, do this math to reduce it down. But we'll go below whatever they're saying, based on whatever was decided, like in March. Whatever we talk about and you say, okay, this is what we want you to do. You give me the direction, I will complete that worksheet that very final moment, so that we hit the numbers, just what you're looking for. So this is, this is where I'm saying in mid-March, this comes out from the county. So that's the email from the county. They sent that email out on a Friday at almost two P M. On a Friday afternoon and they'll tell us, you have until Tuesday to figure this out. So you don't get a big window. So I don't really have that time to say, hey, now that I have the numbers, now I could come to you and tell you, this is exactly what would happen and what we can do. There is no time for us to meet and go through all of that. Um, so you're just going to have to have trust there and say, we're going to give you the guidance, you go, you go through what, what we're asking you to do. So I'm seeking, uh, the recommended motion is that you move to approve the resolution to determine the amounts of money estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation for the year of twenty twenty-five upon the taxable property in the village of Antioch. And you have those dollar amounts, I do not, oh, I do, sorry. Four million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars is that number. And again, you do have that, you will have that opportunity to reduce it. So I do not want to see something go out in the paper that's saying Antioch just raised their property taxes four point ninety percent. You are absolutely not doing that. This is just an estimate.
Any questions? Trustee Pearson?
How much did we, uh, raise last year? It was four point nine this year that we're going to be requesting initially.
Yep.
How much did we end up with last year?
So because this was a, to me, a simple, you just need to approve this estimate tonight. I didn't bring the full presentation, so at the December tenth meeting, I'm going to have a full-blown analysis to explain exactly what we're doing with the levy. Um, how it affects it, how, what the history of it was, how, what the police pension, how that's affecting the numbers. Um, so I'm going to have all of that for you on December the tenth. Um, but if you want to fire me some questions in advance, um, to help me prepare for December the tenth, be happy to accept those and answer them at, at the time you send the email, but also during the, uh, December tenth meeting, if that works for you.
I'm still going to ask another question tonight, though. For two. Um, so we're, we're saying four point nine three percent or whatever, nine eight percent, right under the five percent. But we're going to see that the two point nine percent is the P tell. We have to be two point nine percent or lower, correct?
Not on all items. I believe there's some that do not have caps. I think it's the pension.
Oh, okay. The pension doesn't have caps. I just want to say, I, I'm, I'm very excited that we're looking at reducing taxes, property taxes, reducing property taxes. This is the initiative and I'm glad the mayor's and the board has put us in the position to do this. And if you remember a couple of months ago, I proposed that we, we set the standard for all the surrounding government entities and instead of having the five percent cap or two point nine or less, we set it at two percent or less. And so I just want to, I, I'm glad the mayor is putting us in that position. I hope we start setting that standard.
Yeah, and he's, he's had a couple of meetings now with the taxing districts of Antioch and kind of putting that message out in front of them as well. And so, yes, we need to, we need to lead it because we're the ones that pushing the message.
Usually everybody at the taxing is looking at one grouping. What are you guys going to do? I think we all know who we're talking about. Yeah. Um, any other questions for Michael? Alright, thank you. Very good presentation. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is, uh, consideration and approval of an ordinance granting land use relief for the property located at three twenty-nine Park Avenue, Antioch, Illinois, pin O two O eight, three O six, zero five zero. It's a variation for, uh, front porch, single-family residence. Um, ordinance number twenty-five, eleven dash six seven. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
So moved waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson. Second trustee Pierce. Um, any discussion? If not, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance adding one class B and class C tobacco license for Tobacco Creek LLC to be located at nine fifty-two Main Street, ordinance number twenty-five dash eleven dash sixty-eight. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
I'm moved waving the second reading.
Motion trustee McNeil? Second? Have a second? No second, okay.
Yeah, does that motion, does that per fact, that does, did not receive a second?
Okay, alright. Moving on to number eight. Consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing approving a six-month moratorium on tobacco licenses in the village of Antioch, Illinois. Ordinance number twenty-five dash eleven dash sixty-nine. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading? Motion trustee Pierce.
Okay.
Second trustee Peterson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a proposal with S B Friedman Development Advisors LLC to provide services to the village of Antioch, Illinois. Revenue projections, prepare bond feasibility study and support negotiations for a proposed TIF, uh, proposed development in a TIF district. This is resolution number twenty-five dash eighty-nine. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion trustee Peterson. Second trustee Martinez. Um, any discussion about this item? Alright, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Here?
Hi.
Yes.
Alright, five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance amending various sections of the Antioch village code regarding building code regulations for the village of Antioch. Illinois ordinance number twenty-five dash eleven dash seventy. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
So moved waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Uh, second trustee Martinez. Any discussion regarding this item? And if.
Building codes, example.
Yeah, this is the building code, um, that Howard was working on, um, bringing the I B C twenty twenty-four, but not, um, but, um, eliminating the portion about residential sprinkler requirements, uh, unless it's three stories and over ten thousand square feet, I think is my understanding.
And that portion of it.
Um, yeah, that would mark you in a.
About the, uh, the entire, um, I B C and I R C codes. We have some amendments to the, the, the amendment, one of the amendments is the sprinkler part of it. But generally speaking, we're going to, um, we're adopting the whole code. As, as long, as well as numerous other codes on page two of this, uh, of the memorandum. Cost difference.
The old code to the new code to.
For construction purposes?
Construct.
Um, I mean, it depends what, what project.
Let's say a three hundred thousand dollar house guesting.
Well, since, since we don't have sprinkler systems, which is a huge cost, um, I would say that the cost is, wherever the CPI has been since, say, two thousand twelve, add, say, two percent a year, which is a, you know, somewhat, uh, typical construction cost increase and some years more. So whatever that is, uh, that, that's the, that's the expansion of the cost. The code itself, um, from what I've seen, is really not, um, expanding the, the cost of construction any more than any other village or any other city. Um, and matter of fact, it's reduced it to some extent.
How many other communities in Lake County adopted this code?
Uh, the statewide, um, statutes require every community to update their codes, uh, within a nine-year period. So it's, uh, probably, I'm not sure how many, how many, uh, municipalities in Lake County have adopted two twenty-four. But some of them have probably adopted two twenty-two, two twenty, but at some point, they have to adopt something around the two twenty-four. We're, we're behind approximately thirteen years. Uh, we should have adopted our codes or, or updated our codes approximately three years ago. Um, it's not that big of a deal, but from going forward, we're going to have to adopt our codes at least every nine years or sooner.
We're going to have to take this no matter what.
Absolutely.
Trustee Pierce?
Do we have to take two twenty-four or can we take two twenty or two twenty-two? Um, I've heard a lot of concerns from our contractors that what we're doing with two twenty-four is like on the Vanguard and they, they, it makes them non-competitive to in, in this area because of the cost increases. They have a lot of concerns.
My understanding of most, uh, Lake County, uh, Lake County communities as well as Cook County and Kane or wherever else, most communities are accepting the, for instance, the sprinkler requirements, which are for single-family and for townhouses. You guys aren't. It's a major difference between you guys and a lot of other communities, which makes you, uh, more competitive for builders to want to come here.
I, I'd like all houses to be made of brick, but that's non-competitive, that's very costly. So that, that's, that's a non-starter. Um, you know, so, but I have concerns over the, a thirteen-year jump to, and the impact on our contractors.
It's, um, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's a requirement by Illinois, Illinois statute that we have to, um, in, uh, ad- adopt codes that are, uh, more recent than ones we have right now, which is two thousand twelve.
Thousand twenty-four, the requirement, or is it, we have to be more recent?
We have to be more recent. But I think that the two twenty-four is not much different than two twenty-two or the two twenty-one.
I don't think Howard ever really told us what the differences were.
That would be, um, an extensive, an extensive analysis. Um, you've had really good consultants, um, H R Green helped you guys with this code.
When Mr. Hart is here tonight?
The, the amendments, um, are not that many, but the code is not that much different. I mean, I, I would, I would absolutely tell you to do the two twenty-four and then you have another nine years, eight years, nine years before you have to do it again. You don't have that.
Any questions? Alright, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce? Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, four voting yes, motion carries. Uh, thank you. Consideration, number eleven, consideration and approval of an intergovernmental agreement among the county of Lake and the village of Antioch, the village of Lake Villa, Round Lake Beach, Gray's Lake, Libertyville, Mundaline, Vernon Hills, Buffalo Grove and Wheeling for the equally shared cost of maintaining and recertifying the existing quiet zone corridor, if you remember. Remember that one? Along with Canadian National Railroad, resolution number twenty-five dash ninety. Do I have a motion and a seconds?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Sorry.
Second trustee Martinez, um, as we all remember, a couple of years ago, our phones are rolling up because this was not done by Buffalo Grove, who is doing, or Buffalo Grove. So this is hopefully getting ahead of the, uh, curve on this. Any other discussion or questions for staff?
Well, every train coming through?
Yeah, this is the whole line from, if, if one, if one doesn't certify, the whole line from Buffalo Grove up to the state line gets horns.
Just being name released.
Yeah. Trustee Pierce?
My only, I'm going to vote yes for this because we, we have to, but my question is, how do we monitor the cost? Because we may have one community in this group say, oh, it's an equal maintenance cost that I just did a five billion dollar improvement to a crossing and you all have to share that five million. Is that? Or?
The maintenance costs themselves, trustee, it's for the consultants and the engineering studies that are done.
For the certifying?
I just want to make sure we had that in the record.
Trustee Martinez, given your background, have there been changes to the certifications they did every year, a couple of years? No, okay.
Staff to monitor, the community will have to monitor.
Alright. Um, any other discussion about this? Alright, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Here?
Alright.
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Number twelve, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement exhibit related to the guaranteed maximum price of the new public works facility. Resolution number twenty-five dash ninety-one. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'm moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. Any discussion or questions on this item? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Alright.
Yes.
Alright, five voting yes, motion carries. Um, next item is consideration and approval of a resolution providing an inducement to the village of Antioch, Illinois and other third parties in connection with the potential redevelopment of certain real property located in the village of Antioch. Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-two. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Sorry.
Second trustee Martinez. Any questions or discussions on this item? Alright, roll call, please.
Isaac? McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Uh, five voting yes, motion carries. One item I did forget in the, uh, mayor's report is, um, based on some feedback and, uh, suggestions of the board. And otherwise, we have moved the grand opening of the, uh, groundbreaking of the public works. I wish the grand opening, but the groundbreaking of the public works to Friday, the twenty-first at eleven o'clock before the meeting. So we have consolidated those days. For the public to, we'll do the groundbreaking that day. Um, alright, administrators' reports.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of brief updates. Um, just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of where we're at with the, uh, village administrator recruitment process. We did hear from our recruiter last week. Uh, they reported that they have received a total of a hundred and seven resumes for the position. Uh, they did point out that a number of the uh, applicants that submitted did not meet the minimum requirements for the position, so they will be excluded. Uh, but they do see that there are several strong prospects within the batch, so, um, that application, a resume submission deadline is the twenty-fourth of this month, so we still have a couple of weeks left to go. A lot of insurance meetings taking place this time of year. Um, Lori's been working through the, uh, property casualty insurance. And also we have recently met with our, um, employee health insurance broker. Uh, we'll have, working through some of the finer details, but it's probably no surprise for any of you that have seen health insurance premiums within your own businesses. They're, they're not going down, they're going up. Uh, so we're working through some creative ways to try to reduce the costs, uh, to the village where we can. We recently, um, started our holiday parade planning. Um, you may have noticed that the, um, evergreen Christmas tree over at Secret Creek Park was removed, um, thanks to Dennis and his hard work with Breezy Hill Nurseries, they were able to get that replaced, um, with a new and improved tree. It's actually a bit larger and I think a nicer looking tree than what was there, uh, prior. And Dennis and his team are currently working with Temple to make sure that the lights are strung on the tree in time for the holiday parade. So there should be real, no real changes to our normal cadence for that event. Staff recently met with the, uh, E M eight developer, um, to, as the board may recall, that is the developer that has submitted um, some concept plans for the redevelopment of the former Village Hall property. Um, I think we continue to make refinements to that. Uh, the next step will be for that concept presentation to go before P Z B. I believe, Mark, we were talking about potentially January, is that correct? For, for P Z B to simply look at the concept and provide some feedback to the developer on that. Uh, a large contingent of staff, including the mayor, uh, met with the marketplace developers last week. I think we're making good headway with them and finding creative ways to make sure that that development moves forward. Um, they have been pretty clear that they're going to need some financial assistance from the village to make that, um, make that investment in our community, particularly to the Route one seventy-three right-of-way improvements. Um, unfortunately, they still have not had a response from. Um, unfortunately, they still have not had a response from Illinois Department of Transportation, um, you know, creeping up on the two-year mark. So they're hoping to hear it any day, but, um, I don't think that they're holding their breath. But we do have some time, since we did just engage S B Friedman to do the bond feasibility studies. So we have some work on our plates before that we can, uh, finalize a term sheet with them. And then, uh, the mayor already mentioned the, uh, the groundbreaking for public works, so unless there's any questions from the board, that will conclude my report for this evening.
Questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, village clerk, any report? Nope. Trustees?
I have questions. Uh, I'm getting phone call after phone call. And our liquor license is getting out of control, black velvet to be. I don't know what that is. Looking at the video, if it's gonna be a bottom bank, bin club. Uh, curtains that close with couches, uh, coin is going on. I use terms. We have an ordinance, you can't have windows sixty percent covered, yet they got sixty percent covered. I did, I, I asked if there's building permits, I didn't give any building permits. Uh, no inspection services for the plumbing move, the electricity, nothing. Yet they're having soft openings. And I just think of one, one bitten, twice shy with that bar burnt down and people got killed. I don't know what the heck is going on. We've got, but we got bars not serving food. Turning into taverns. Changing ownerships and, and nothing's coming from the board for vetting. So I don't even know if we have felons that have liquor licenses, because it hasn't been vetted. I don't know if he's got. Multiple owners in there, change his license. We got a couple places that don't serve food anymore. Just, they're just a, a bar and a Betty's. That's it.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, so just for, um. Information purposes, um, we did meet with the fire marshal who did go into that location you mentioned and did said. Say it passed, uh, life safety, uh, codes. Um, I did talk to, uh, Mark to look at our code to see if there are any obvious violations. And the blacked-out windows is probably a pretty obvious violation. Uh, we have not been in there. We did not have any, um. Uh, license, uh, building permits requested from that building. Um, so we were talking about what the next steps are. I mean, based on the pictures, it looks like a brand-new bar was built in that building. Um, I will say, and I'll, uh, plead with the board again, that I think one of the most important things we could do as a board is. To pass at least occupancy permits and business licenses so that we're getting ahead of these before. We're finding out on Facebook that there's a new business in town. Um, as far as a liquor license goes, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Um, there are s- several businesses that you mentioned that have, um, taken liberties in, in what their license says they're supposed to do and what they're doing. Uh, we were in the process of potentially sending out, um, compliance letters when the renewals were up. But based on current, uh, groundwork, compliance letters.
Change and don't have food and they're getting a reduced license, are they breaking the law?
Well, they're definitely in violation of their license, so we're gonna, so we're, we're just gonna.
One of those should be shut.
Send out compliance check letters to them.
Because they broke the law trying to cheat the government.
And I did also, um, have Lori today print me the list of all of our licenses and tie, uh, tie up who has what type of license.
I'd like to see building permits of, you know, I'll pick on one, one right now that's just flaunting. In front of everybody with the blackened windows, the curtains. I don't know what's gonna happen behind the curtain, on a couch. We all laugh about it, but what, we have an order.
I, I, I understand. It's definitely an issue. It's definitely an item.
And, and, and here, I'm gonna bring another thing they put in, valet parking, where's the car's gonna go? Do we have a certificate of insurance? Who's covering these cars? Because once you give up and you're giving them money, you lose that higher than non-done auto coverage. So they're driving illegal with no insurance down our roads.
I think as a liquor commissioner, my job right now is to make sure that, uh, do a liquor.
Validating cars and we have no insurance and they got, I mean, we, we, we could have the police department demand to sit there and give every one of those cars a, uh, no insurance ticket. Five hundred dollars apiece, make some money. Because they're breaking the law and there's nobody, if they get hit by a car across an intersection, they can't recover for that dead or injured person.
Good information. And again, I think staff is working diligently on this, trying to come up with solutions to make sure.
They got a red tag to place.
So, so I'll talk to staff and Mark and then we'll kinda circle up again tomorrow. We just got the fire department report today. So we're waiting to see if, uh, how that came back and then figure out the next steps, if there are next steps.
It's nothing against the owner. I don't want him to think that it's a public safety issue.
Um, anybody, any other trustees have a report?
I, I do, uh, if briefly, I'd like to say, uh, trustee Mesa, I do concur with a lot of your statements. I know the mayor and I have talked about a lot of these things offhand. Um, and I would appreciate if you did give, uh, as a. Life, uh, insurance professional, a laundry list of the, uh, faults that you find, uh, to staff.
Can't do that because I'm not putting my errors in admission and I don't get paid. Oh, I'm, I, I, I'll give you what I know. But I'm not gonna give you a list of violations. I just gave you a couple of them, of life safety issue. So here's a, here's a question. It's a simple question. If they're, if they're valet parking a car, they got care cussing control. They get in an accident or someone scratches the car, who pays for it? They, they got no insurance, who pays for that? L A insurance is almost impossible. It gets very expensive because someone can say, hey, I had, I had five hundred dollars sitting in my car, it's stolen. That's a claim. Or I got a new scratch on it, that's a claim. Who's paying for it? It's gonna be a big headache. Big headache and it, 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 there's no coverage. There's zero coverage. Unless he's got a special company valet that I don't know about, but nobody wants to write that coverage just because. Care cuss control, they're moving cars around, they're parking them in an unknown location. They gotta be specific known. On that application where you're moving the cars to, how far is it from your business? There's no, there's no one. He's got no coverage for this. I can tell you just from the markets. And then your coverage on your car, depending on what company you got, may not even have higher than non-done on coverage on your car. Someone bought one eight hundred fake insurance. Because some companies, you gotta pay that extra to have that put on. Where a, a name brand company will put it on.
Bring that to my attention. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um. We have, uh. A motion to adjourn for the, um, regular meeting? Anyone?
You know what? Real quickly, I just thought of it. Halloween, I thought went really good in town. The Oakwood Knowles, the kids were all very nice. It was very, very enjoyable, nice costumes. I, I just wanted to thank the police department. I didn't mean to do, I just remembered I was gonna do this. Thank you all for going to Oakwood Knowles, as you do every year, and providing the police escort. I know they appreciate it.
Uh, and motion to adjourn, anyone? Motion trustee Pierce? Second trustee Peterson, uh, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty. We'll take a five-minute break and do the committee, the whole meeting. All right, let's, uh, call the, uh, meeting to order, the committee, the whole meeting. It is seven thirty-seven P M. Roll call, please.
Trustee Mesa? Trustee McNeil?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
Trustee Peterson? Mayor Gardner?
Present. All right, uh, no citizens wishing to address the board, I assume. First item is the approval of the October twenty-second. Uh, I think there's maybe a misprint on the original. Uh, twenty twenty-five committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a second?
Some of.
Motion trustee Peterson? Second trustee Martinez, roll call, please.
Mesa?
Yeah.
McNeil? Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Four voting yes, motion carries. Item number two is presentation on the status of insurance renewal by West Insurance. On the property casualty and workers' comp insurance for twenty twenty-six. Jeff Rafe from West Insurance is here.
It's already been a year. It goes fast. Yeah. Yes, thank you for having me, uh, mayor, members of the board, Jeff Rafe with the West Insurance Agency. Here to discuss the village's property casualty workers' compensation renewals. Um, property casualty renews on December thirty-first, um, currently with H C C. And the workers' compensation renews on January first, which is with the Illinois Public Risk Fund. Um, we received quotation, uh, renewal quotation from H C C, um, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Uh, which was a little bit over four seventy-seven, which was about a twenty percent increase over the current term. If you recall last year, um, H C C came in at the last moment. Liberty Mutual was the, uh, insurance company that wrote the property and the casualty for the village. They were not renewing the property. Uh, we were kinda scrambling to find a property market. H C C came in, they did a really nice job, um, and offered a very competitive renewal. Um, this year, because of some property increases, um, they underwrote some of the buildings that were underinsured at the time. Obviously have a beautiful new building here now. Um, so there was a pretty big increase in the total insured property value. Um, if you look at H C C, um, compared to who we're going to recommend, Travelers. Um, there was about a thirty-three percent increase in the total insured values between the buildings, uh, the business personal property for the village. Um, so. Travelers came in, uh, similar coverages, some different deductible options, um, some very favorable deductible options. Uh, the law enforcement liability with Travelers, the deductible went from fifty thousand with H C C to twenty-five thousand with Travelers. Um, there was an auto liability deductible, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars with H C C. Travelers is writing it with no liability deductible. Um, and their estimated premium is three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Which is a pretty significant decrease from the current term, um, and much. So more significant than H C C's renewal term. Uh, the Illinois Public Risk Fund quoted a renewal premium of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six fifty-six, which is essentially flat. Um, compared to the expiring term, there was about a thirteen percent decrease in the total estimated annual payroll. So we're just under seven million, um, a- again, a thirteen percent decrease from last year. There was about a seven percent increase, um, in a, in an experience modification factor. Which is a factor that gets calculated in based on claims history. Look back at four years of history, um, and they decide. What the factor is based on those claims and they compare you to other, uh, municipalities of similar size, uh, using similar class codes. That was up from a one point four three to a one point five three, again, about seven percent. Uh, the only public risk fund also offers a safety grant each year to its members. Uh, it's based on profitability, um, it's based on experience, uh, with the I P R F. This year's, uh, safety grant was the amount of twelve thousand, four thirty-two, which was up from last year. Um, I know that we utilize that to purchase safety equipment for public works, for police. Um, it's a great program that the only public risk fund offers. Um, village's cyber liability is currently underwritten by C F C. And the crime, uh, for the village is currently underwritten by Hanover. Both of those policies are flat compared to expiring, which is fantastic. Um, so the recommendation would be to move the property casualty from H C C this year. Uh, to travel, take advantage of the savings, the significant differences in deductibles. Um, if we did that and we stayed with the Illinois Public Risk Fund. For the workers' compensation, C F C for the cyber and Hanover for the crime. The overall decrease this year would be a four percent decrease or about a thirty-one thousand dollar decrease from the expiring term. Um, we did send applications to thirteen insurance companies in total, uh, including the carriers that I mentioned. Um, we had some other competitive quotes, uh, the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust, which is a pool here in the state of Illinois. Um, they write a lot of municipal insurance. They do a very good job. Um, offered a competitive quote. It was a little bit higher than Travelers and I think Travelers was, had some more favorable coverages. Um, so therefore the recommendation would be to move forward with Travelers, um, the Illinois Public Risk Fund, C F C and Hanover. Yes, yes, there is a, a wind hail deductible. Um, last year it was fifty thousand with H C C. It's going up to a hundred thousand, um, and that sits the same with Travelers. We're starting to see insurance companies now either put large, uh, deductible amounts of a hundred thousand. Or a certain percentage of the total value. Um, we've seen anywhere from five to ten percent of total value, uh, which is a pretty significant, uh, deductible on wind and hail. You might see this on your personal stuff, right? You have people knocking down your doors saying, hey, listen, we had a hailstorm. Um, and all of a sudden, you've got a bunch of claims for, you know, hail, hail damage to your roof. And so this is one of those deterrents to try and prevent things like that. But we're seeing it, uh, happen a lot in the Midwest.
Questions other than? Sounds good to me. It's, uh, went down, instead of going up twenty percent every year. Any other questions on the insurance? All right, good work. Thank you. And, um. I feel like we got this information to us a lot sooner this year, so thank you for staying on top of all that. All right?
All right.
Um, all right, we'll move this. Move this to the next board meeting. Um, and actually. You will probably put some of these items on the consent agenda at that, uh, planning meeting on the twenty-second, so we can just get those things in place. What? Twenty-first? Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Um, all right, next item, discussion regarding staff recommendation on an upgraded phone system. And Amy is here to present.
So this is a long-awaited project that was supposed to be completed last year. Uh, due to some issues with the integration with Suncom, we had to wait till our migration to Lake Com. Before we could complete this project, so, um. Staff has done extensive, there was a group of us, um, that sit in, uh, sat in on multiple demos. Uh, to look at different solutions and the recommended solution we came up with was Nextiva. Uh, it was based on features and pricing. If you look at page five sixty-four in the packet. We don't have to go through the entire four-page memo. I do apologize for its length. But it will show that, um, I did have a budgeted amount of ten thousand dollars for the implementation setup and hardware. The actual cost is going to be six thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. Um, and then the monthly reoccurring cost was budgeted for eighteen thousand this year, anticipating, um, a partial year. Uh, it will be because of when we are looking to implement it, that will be a little over eight thousand. So I will be under budget for that. Michael, listening, for thirteen thousand.
You guys are giving all good news today. Sleep well today.
Um, I, so next year I will be budgeting for the full amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred. That includes all support. Um, and any ads moved, changes that I can't do internally, I can call them. Uh, I wanna point out that right now our annual cost, recurring costs for our on-premise phone solution. Is eighteen thousand, four, four hundred and forty dollars. Um, that is end of life. That was end of life as of December thirty-first. I, there's no updates to that right now. There, I cannot add any licensing. So if we went on-premise, we would still be having that eighteen thousand dollar recurring fee. Plus the cost of hardware of replacing it, which is anywhere from sixty to a hundred thousand right now. Um, when we purchased this one in twenty nineteen, it was forty-four thousand. They no longer make a mid-sized model. Most of them are going to enterprise because they are looking for everybody to go out to the cloud. The other issue with an on-premise solution is we have seven locations now. And we are with an I P Sec V P N tunnel. We are no longer connected via fiber. So even our phone system here, if we are using the actual physical phones and you go to hit the directory. It takes at least a minute for it to populate because our system is over at the police department. Um, with this phone system, there's also S M S messaging included with it. This will help us implement the last half of the multi-factor authentication that we've been trying to get through. Because we cannot make, um, individual users use their personal cell phones to get these text messages. So now with the solution, they can get it anywhere. They have web access. They can log into the website. They can get that code. To do the multi-factor authentication. Um, on page, starting on page five sixty-six, there is a big long matrix of all the different solutions. That, um, I had looked at as possibilities. Five sixty-eight does show the four that we did do the demos with. And the cost for the contract that we initially had quoted. Now, the contract that's in front of you today is more expensive because we did go ahead. We were basing it first off for these initial quotes to do apples to apples on our current phone system setup. We are going to be bringing in the community center water treatment plant and our fax lines over. Um, eliminating a lot of the analog lines for, uh, and getting us all on the same system. And then five sixty-nine is the actual quote itself. They, it, I do wanna point out, there is sales tax on this. After, since we're not a customer, they cannot take sales tax off right now. Uh, we will be getting a credit after our initial payments and after they process everything. We'll see that credit for the tax back to us. Some of the municipalities that are on the system are Village of Oakbrook, Village of Bowling Brook, Grundy County. City of Lockport, Esor School District, and they are also the finalists for Village of Westmont going in front of their board for approval as well. As long as um uh you know, Malibu, California, Aberdeen, South Dakota. Um corporations that are using this right now are IBM, Amazon, D H L, Taco Bell, Texas Roadhouse, uh San Antonio Spurs. Luminary Ikea, you know, so it is a solid phone solution. Uh it will give staff the ability to be mobile, there is an app on the phone that so. We don't have to provide cellphone numbers, we can just log into the app, get our phone calls, which would be great when I'm waiting on. Um tech support from something and I'm at the police department and they can call my phone and get it. And also when I'm dialing out, you're not giving out your cellphone number, you are now giving out your desk phone number. With all of that information, any questions?
Voice over internet?
It wa- it is an actual true cloud solution, so everything, it's not. Um so yes, it would be, there's no analog phone, so it's over our network through the internet out, so we don't own the hardware. We are having licensing costs, right now we have voice over I P on-premise.
Is every desk require a phone or can it be on a used on a laptop?
It can be used on a laptop.
Are we going with that or every desk needs a phone?
So we are purchasing desk phones for um users, it is part of the proposal.
Different phones and most.
Correct.
A lot of companies are getting away from phones and using the computer.
Correct, um there are two different phones proposed, the E two twenties, um which there are thirty-three of which are zero cost. Uh those are for the main areas and for uh the booking room, lunch areas, uh one for in here. Yes, and then the E three fifties are the desk phones for staff. Uh there it it's a total one-time cost of one thousand one hundred dollars, uh most staff here don't use headsets. Um it is just, it's 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 a personal preference and. Um you know, tha- that price over a five-year period of time i- is minimal. It it's right, so.
Well, they forced us just to, no phones, computer.
Right.
Stupid wireless headset. And I, I bought a polyphone, so so it's on speaker the whole time. So they'll be able to bring their laptop home and basically virtual.
They can, yes, anywhere that there's internet from any, there is um a website they can go to, there's an app to download to the desktop. And there is an app that they can download to their phone.
And how many times like today I was down for all morning with Teams. Microsoft and an outage.
Right, yes, yes, um so they have. In there, it they have a ninety-nine point nine 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 percent uptime, that's one of the reasons. That we did not look at Ring Central was because of the amount of outages they have had. So out of, I I spoke to uh the director at the Village of Oakbrook and the director at the Village of Bowling Brook. And neither one in the past year can recall an outage, so. But with any technology, I we've experienced outages with on-premise solutions. Uh so at least there is redundancy that even if any location loses internet. It's not that when a caller comes in, they are getting a busy signal, they would be able to route to our voicemail, have the auto attendant still. So we do not have voicemail attached to email, but they do get a notification of it. And then they can log into the system with any web address. Or with the web address out to the system.
Steve Pierce?
I got two questions, last time we changed forces phone systems, numbers changed, extensions changed, uh what button I pressed on the phone, right? Thought I was getting Village Hall and I got Parks Department and Parks Department became Village Hall or something. Is that gonna happen this time or?
No, no, all extensions will stay the same, all direct dial numbers will stay the same, our primary numbers for each location will stay the same. The only thing that might change is if some but if if a department chooses to change their phone routing for the auto attendant. But.
And then one of my next question is, if they have this phone app or computer app or whatever. Is is it possible that the village trustees can each have an assigned number? So people can call into that and leave voicemails for us there and we can then get rid of the expense of our cell phones that some of us still have hanging around. Not really being used, I guess.
Um we can, I can have them modify the contract um to include additional licensing.
Additional like in per like direct dial numbers that the, yeah.
Well, for any, um so it. They it would.
Sure, cost savings or?
Yes, it would be, um so it would just an additional thirteen ninety-five per user per month, so. There would be a cost savings there, so I can um discuss it with, you know. Mayor and the administrator and. Right. Right, so.
Alright, thank you, and we will move this possibly to the consent agenda for the next meeting, alright? Thank you, um discussion regarding the I three broadband franchise and right-of-way agreement, Dennis.
Good evening, um earlier this year, uh I three, a company that provides broadband reached out to the village. Uh looking to install their dry utility in our uh right-of-way. Uh after several conversations with the company, going over our code. And understanding uh where they anticipated on placement. Uh and some of the conflicts that we would uh encounter with our utilities or other utilities like uh. ComEd, Nycor, A T and T Comcast, uh I think we came to a point of understanding. And then started drafting a right-of-way agreement uh through the attorneys, which they've uh I three has also reviewed. And the next step I think is to uh establish an agreement with as a franchise agreement. Which then we can have some negotiating powers in if we wanted some of our buildings supplied with this or uh fees that may be tied to their utility. But I wanted to make sure that uh we were heading in the right direction, there are other broadband companies out there that have contacted us. But we're further along with I three and checking some of the references uh with other communities and. Understanding uh any issues that they have had, we haven't really come across any red flags or alarms that would allow us to. Yep, so I don't think they're necessarily gonna go away, so.
We which needs it, we need competition and.
This will um involve basically them running all of their main lines and then up to the individual property owner. Contacting I three to establish their service line in.
If other competitors came to us, would they still be able to do the same thing or once I three's in there, they have a, I would say monopoly on it, but is that?
They could, but but the issue that we have just existing right now, we have water, sanitary.
Running out of space.
Yeah, ComEd's in there whether they're, if it's above ground where there's power poles, then you have multiple locations, you know, within. That pole height, but underground are are right-of-ways are are so congested with utilities of ours. The villages and then dry utilities that there's, there's gonna be a point to where it won't be allowed.
I just, I ran into somebody once, it was like a A T and T guy and was saying, well, you guys only let Xfinity and how come, so you know, just thinking ahead. Are we gonna have those, but you're saying it's more of a market, once the, once somebody's in the market, it deters the others, okay? It's not us saying you can't, we have one now, you can't come, okay? What about Starlink, when's that coming, is that like, is that the difference? Alright.
Is this gonna cover the whole village or is every, every subdivision, every neighborhood in the village?
They anticipate on covering all of the village, they're already uh running down Route forty-five. Um they have some plans to be in unincorporated Antioch, so they're already surrounding us, but there's a map at the end of.
See the map and it's trying, I'm trying to. Gauge this, it looks like the west side gets sooner than the east side.
Yeah, they have it, they have it uh basically proposed in phases. But I believe the anticipation is once they start that within a year to a year and a half, they would have all the village covered.
Questions, alright, thank you Dennis, we'll move this one along as well, uh last item is looking at the annual meeting schedule. Um just a couple items I want to point out, um Veterans Day is on a Wednesday next year, so. It looks like they were proposed Thursday meeting that week, which I'm fine with. Um I was, I forgot that we had Parks meeting on the eighteenth, so I was saying, well, maybe we could shift it to the eighteenth if we really have one meeting. But um that was one of the items, I see that technically right now we only have one December meeting scheduled for next year. And then this only really affects me, I do know that the March meeting is during, you know, spring break, so sometimes that affects a few of us here. Um are there any questions or concerns about the meeting schedule that's proposed for next year?
Hey, every Wednesday meeting affects me.
Every meeting affects me, it's like, wake up in the morning, got another meeting night, um any? Questions, concerns, otherwise we'll move this forward, I guess, the consent agenda, obviously. When we get into the year, if we need to make any modifications, usually towards the end of the year is when things get a little um congested, but. The one outlier is a Thursday night meeting next year, unless the Bears or Packers play, we should be okay. Alright, any uh move that to the next consent agenda as well, any um for the quarterly meeting, you know, um bring. Uh your different capital projects you'd want to talk about, uh Michael already kind of has built out some capital. Items into his budget, um so we'll recirculate that, including when I talk about capital repair replacements. Um I would like to talk about building permits and building permit fees, cause with our new software migration, we've uncovered that. Um what we've been doing on the ground is not what the code says and the code to me is overly complicated, so I'd like to talk about. Potentially simplifying that process, cause we have a current code that talks about uh cubic. Cubic feet and just to me, it should be like, it's a percentage and that's what it is.
Same measurements the ark was built with, like.
Yeah, yeah, it's 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 very, it took me four hours, I still could figure it out. Um you know, items like the sawmill, things that we've talked about, I'd also like to again, maybe talk about these ordinances, business. Permits, uh occupancy permits, uh Oakwood Knowles had a request that I think will be talked, that will be talked about. And then the Veterans Committee slash Veterans Memorial stuff is something that I'd like to discuss that day, so um anything else? What's that? Like the Veterans Committee and the Veterans Memorial, I think we need to like get those things shored up, at least have a discussion about those. I know, um.
They're working on it, I think Brent's sick.
On the numbers.
It's not responsible, I'm gonna get right off the hook, it's up to her, I asked, this is third time, I'll be asking bank statements. And donors list, it's not up to him, he's just a committee member, she's got in her, she's got in her kitchen, wherever she keeps it.
Wherever she keeps it, but he is. But this isn't a point.
But well, this will be something, this will be a great time to talk about it and, what, two week and a half, is that it? Week and a half, um we have a couple department reports, uh no community development report, um so I'm gonna move on to. Finance, who been reporting all night, but maybe has some more news for us.
It's been a busy month, tell you that, so we had the B S and A go live, um. On October the twenty-seventh, uh as a reminder, the village will save ninety-eight hundred dollars annually in licensing fees. We've had a few hiccups, uh which is, which is to be expected, uh but staff has been working through these smaller items, um nothing major has hit us at this point. Um we did have um our first utility bill um was issued through the new software, uh congratulations to Rachel Thiel. Uh she's worked really hard to prepare for the migration and she pre- she prepared um some of the public communications with Jim Moran. Much appreciated, uh this bill run includes the first vendor payments by A C H Direct Deposits, our vendors have been asking about this. You know, because we've been paying by check for all these years, uh so this is the first round where they actually were able to get a direct deposit for. Uh their payments, quick shout out to Accounts Payable Accountant, uh John Kickert. Um he's worked really hard at um the Accounts Payable module and learning it really well. Um he has over thirty-five vendors that are currently signed up for the A C H um auto auto payments. On uh November first, the customers began paying the credit card processing fees. Uh I did receive a few negative comments about the change, uh but so far I think everything's gone well, I was able to um send him a note back. Saying, you know, we're, we're looking to co- you know, cut costs, I mean, this is what you hired me to do to. Uh review the costs and um see what we could do to uh save money. But I think it, I didn't get a second email back, so I thought it went well, I guess. Illinois Department of Employment Securities, uh state uh state unemployment taxes. The state accepted our request to become a reimbursable employer versus a rate-paying employer effective January the first. Uh the annual savings is twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Uh Kia Business Incentive Payments, um it was mentioned earlier, the first payment was in today's bills. I'll mention that uh state law requires the rebate sharing agreements to be uploaded to the uh Illinois Department of Revenue's website. Uh Lori completed that upload, thank you Lori. Um we ended the C Z on Bank Reconciling Services, Senior Accountant Becky Kajak is performing the work. The annual savings is twenty thou- twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars, um Becky's been outstanding, I'm very thankful for all of her efforts. Um without her assess, without her assistance, I'm not sure that I could have met all the deadlines um of October. Um it's, it's been a lot, um but she's a trooper and a great, great help. The audit, uh we met all of the October thirty-one audit filing deadlines. We still have um a few additional filings that need to be completed, but they don't have deadlines, um it's just sending off uh the reports to different. Different agencies. And financial institutions like uh State Bank of, State Bank of the Lakes is one of them, so there's no deadline, it's just, can you get it to us? You know, it helps us with um having all the reports on hand. I'll, I, I apologize that I couldn't get the uh tax levy presentation for tonight, like I said, it was just a busy month, um then. And I thought, you know what, I can get this by December tenth, so it'll be fine. Priority one right now is the the tax levy ordinance and that presentation for the December tenth meeting. Uh second priority is the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven budget, I updated the Excel worksheet and I'm ready to begin. Uh meeting with the directors to discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty-six project, uh projected year year-end amounts. Uh the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven capital project items and the five-year financial forecast plan, so everything's in place. And I'm ready to start moving forward with that. Looking forward, finance has a few additional projects on our list, um the police pension funding policy, I've mentioned that before. Um credit card policy um needs to be updated, um looking to bring forward a resolution for the village board to authorize prepayment of certain invoices. Like bonds, loans, utilities, medical insurance, um it's just a. Where we're already making some advanced payments, but there isn't anything that says you actually authorized us to do it, so this is kind of, you know. Getting it in front of you to say, these are the things that we need to prepay before the board meeting. Um and so then you're all able to see exactly what items we're talking about, um paying in advance at the meeting. And last item is a fee ordinance with Jim Moran, um where we're looking to have um all of our fees on into a single ordinance. So uh it could be reviewed annually, um have it all in one spot, it's clean, it's a good idea. That's all I have, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, um police. If we chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh for the month of October, we had just over twelve hundred service calls that we completed for the police department. And we issued out four hundred and one total tickets, that includes warnings, non-traffic adjudication and traffic citations. We had twenty-six traffic crashes, twenty-four were property damage, absolutely twenty-two were property damage for or personal injury. Uh and we completed a hundred and seventeen cases and we arrested thirty individuals. Uh some staff highlights, Officer Lotterback and Hart, they're in their final phase of field training, so hopefully in a couple more weeks will be released to solo patrol. See them out and about, Adrian Serrano will graduate SWIC Academy on December fifth, we're looking forward to his return. Uh Detective Nemec, who was recently married, uh attended the homicide conference last month. Sergeant Oliver attended the Lake County Major Crimes Task Force uh conference last month. Sergeant Oliver attended the Lake County Major Crimes Task Force uh conference last month. And we also completed all of our state mandated mandated training and we're in compliance with that. Some anniversaries we have. Is uh Patrick Conrad's at two years, John Grogan's one year and Corillo is one year as well. Some achievements that we did in October, we transitioned to all of our Axon BWCs from our Panasonic, so you might see the new. Green and red circles rather than the red dots on our things. Um, we all liked the transition, it went smooth. Um, Axon gives us the capability to have evidence dot com, which uploads directly to the state's attorney's office and we can share with other jurisdictions, so it's a complete upgrade for us. Uh, we participated in Treat the Streets annual event. We handed out approximately sixty pounds of candy. We're not sure if the kids enjoyed it more than the officers or our local dentists. Uh, we hosted four training sessions at Fisher Paper. They requested us to come in and train all their employees on active shooter threat assessment. And some ride, hide, fight. And we had Commander Bruce Alley go out there and do different, four different training session with the employees. They they were very thankful of that. On November fourth, we transitioned to Lake Com, as you guys have heard. That has actually gone very smooth with no problems. November third, we went to E citations, which that's a printer that's in our squads rather than handwritten ones that we used to hand out. Now a printer prints them out.
And read them anyways when they're handing.
I know, yeah. Now they also get shared right to the um court, so it's a lot smoother transition. Uh, once again this year, we'll be assisting with traffic control at the Sailor's Holiday Dinner at the VFW on December sixth. Save the date for our shop of the cop. That's December eleventh. And again, we'd like to thank Raymond Auto Group for sponsoring the event. Lions Club last month had uh provided first responders dinner. We'd like to thank them as well. And then finally this, I don't know if I'll be given any more police updates with the chief coming back, so. Um, for the thumbs comment, I mean, um, something on behalf of the police department. I did, but I'm not gonna be insubordinate. Um, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and congratulate. Chief Gutcher for everything he has accomplished over the past two years serving in that one, but two demanding roles. As chief of police and village administrator, it's hard enough to do one of those jobs well, but somehow he managed to do both without losing his hair. Oh, I mean, uh. Uh, we're extremely.
Don't answer it.
I forget, we don't answer it. We're extremely proud of the work he's done for the village, but we're even more excited to have him back full time with us at the PD. The officers have missed him, though maybe not all the after hour calls, the weekend texts and. Quote, find out what's going on here. Are there messages that somehow we've learned to code as you better take care of it now? Uh, chief, we'd like to welcome you back officially. We would also have one small request. Please leave those chief administrative level work hours behind. We like you, we respect you. We're happy to see you back. But nobody likes you enough to spend sixty to seventy hours a week with you. And then the nonstop group text on the weekend. No, but sincerely, we're grateful for everything you've done um for the village, how you represented a police department. You've proven that dedication and servers don't have a time clock. Though we'd all be fine if you started. Working regular hours again.
In the GPS.
Yeah, on behalf of the police department, welcome back, chief. And we're proud of you, we're lucky to have you, and we're looking forward to working with you, just preferably during business hours.
You're probably happy enough to sit through these meetings anymore for this report, right? Or maybe you will. You still doing it? Alright, good, alright, good, alright, good. Any question? Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, hug each other. Oh, there we go. Oh, that was sweet.
The um, I do thankfully not have any requests for executive session, so on that note, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion trustee Peterson. Second, anyone? Second trustee McNeil, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned at eight fourteen.